Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Glasgow City Council. We'll begin by standing and have our pledge to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing, Councilman Patrick Gaunt will lead us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the stay. We thank you for each person represented here in our families, Lord. We thank you for our city that we get to live in and the leadership that leads us through the city. Help us make good decisions today. Help us have open minds and open hearts. Thank you for all you do. God bless each one of us and give us a good day and a good day tomorrow. Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Anybody seated? Clerk Simmons is not here tonight, and so Ms. April Russell is filling in for her tonight, and I will ask April, if you would, to call the roll.
Benell?
Present.
Lowry?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Gaunt?
Yes, ma'am.
Marion?
Here.
Trigg?
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Neal?
Here.
Witcher?
Here.
I have one.
All right. We have a quorum. Thank you all for being here. We have lots to take care of tonight, and we appreciate your attendance. And the next thing we need to do is to approve our order of business tonight. I think it was, well, actually, the agenda was so large, we weren't really able to email it out, but most people were, got their agenda either by coming by and picking it up or whatever, but you've seen it, and I would entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as it was presented to you so we can proceed tonight.
Motion, Benell.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
From Councilman Marion. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of proceeding with the agenda as it was presented indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? All right, so we'll move on to the agenda for tonight, and the first item of the agenda is to approve the minutes of our council meeting back on October the 28th. So you had those, chance to look over those. I would entertain a motion to approve those from the 28th.
Norris.
Okay, Councilman Norris.
Second.
Second from Councilman Neal. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes from the 28th? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are into the record for October the 28th. We'll begin with some old business, and really, we're going to revisit, I guess the best way to set this up is that we had a really, a good, healthy discussion on the 911 interlocal agreement at our last council meeting, but we did not finish hearing from our 911 emergency director, Ms. Beverly Harbison, and so she is leading on the agenda tonight. I believe it was, wasn't it Councilman Kirkpatrick that requested she be on the agenda?
Sir.
Okay. Okay, either way, I would like for Beverly to approach the podium so that we can finish hearing about the 911 interlocal agreement. There was quite a bit of discussion, and there was quite a bit of work that went into cranking out that interlocal agreement. So Beverly, thank you for coming back, and would you like to, Marla, would you like to lead with a question, or?
Sure. First of all, Beverly, I would like to publicly apologize for the last meeting. What seemed, it seemed disrespectful to cut you off and wanted to invite you back to answer some questions that needed to be answered, and no, no bad intent whatsoever from me, and I'm sorry about that. I think I went back and looked at the last council meeting, and I know when the question was called, Mr. Marion was asking about a penalty, about the interlocal agreement. If the other counties or agencies don't pay, what do we do?
Right.
There is no penalty in that interlocal agreement. Had that scenario to already happen, and unfortunately, several years ago, the board discussed doing that, and we billed Medcalf County a total of roughly a little over $12,000. The city of Edmonton paid their part. Edmonton, or Medcalf County did not. No, there's not anything we can do that is not in that interlocal agreement. That was your question, Max, that you were asking?
Yeah, being on the 911 board with you, you know, we, we've come a long way from where we were, but prior to us agreeing to the interlocal agreement, I wanted to, because when we were, had our committee meeting, we were kind of all on board, and we thought that a penalty would be good for both sides, Medcalf and Glasgow, to keep everybody accountable. So that's what I was wanting to add in to the council before we just agreed on something. It would be like leasing a property and not taking a deposit, you know. We have nothing to fall back on, so all that hard work that we put into this over the last two years that I was on, if something happens and they just decide not to pay, well, we're back at square one because we didn't put a clause in there for that. So I wanted the council to know that prior to just saying yes to it.
I do, one concern I do have is the $100,000 that's been put on there as a cap. If we do a project, has to be anonymous vote of the board. That may be difficult down the road because our tools are quite expensive, but that is in the interlocal agreement. But moving forward, like I said last council meeting, you know, we do need to change our funding mechanism. We can do that now. And I just ask, and I asked the safety committee to not put it on the back burner because it, it doesn't need to just go away. You know, there's many different ways that you can do it. You could do it on, right now, it's on our landline bill, which we all know is dwindling. We could put it on the water company bill. We could put it on taxes. That's something you all, as elected officials, are going to have to come up with. Glasgow and Barron County is going to have to work together to decide where we need to put that money, where the fees be. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Terry.
No, I'm sorry to interrupt. Where do you see most municipalities placing that fee on?
Uh, Terry, I mean, you've, most of, I think, are, it's easier to put it on the tax bill. I mean, you look at Barron County, we have several different water companies, so each company would have to collect it. Each company does get a percentage of that money. It's not a lot, but I think that's why a lot of counties are doing it that way. Now, some still do have it on the landline. They've just raised that fee. I don't agree with that because I, I just don't think it's right to, you know, just be on the landline, you know. I can tell you, in looking at both counties, in 2012, we were collecting roughly $32,000 a month on landlines. In 2023, we collected a little over $14,000. That's how much it's dropped, and it's, 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 it's going to continue to drop.
Drastically.
Correct. I mean, I don't have a landline at home. Yes, we pay, we, we do receive more money on the wireless side because there's more wireless phones out there, but we don't get that whole 70 cents that's on our wireless bill. Everybody has a 70 cents fee on their wireless bill, but we don't get, we end up with about 31 cents of that money. So, that's all set by the state. I'm sorry.
About electric, I know everybody's not property owners, and it doesn't seem fair for landlords to have to foot that whole bill if they have 12 properties.
Some counties have put it on electric. Some counties have been in lawsuits trying to put it on electric bills.
Okay.
You know, the question was asked about putting it on internet charge. You can't do that. So, you know, for 30 years now, we've collected that dollar on the landline. It's $12 a year. You know, I think it needs to be raised. I personally would like to see it put on the tax bill. I just think it would be easier for everybody, but that's not, but then people will say, well, everybody don't own land. So, we've looked at many different ways of placing that, but at the end of the day, that has to go through the magistrate's. So you all will have to get with your magistrate's and decide, and I'm sure the mayor and the county judge exec will have to do some, a lot of homework there. We've looked at a lot of different options.
But that's why I kind of wanted that clause in there because it's not fair for us to put it extra on our citizens because Medcalf County's, something happens and they might not be able to keep their end up. And so then, you know, they're just going to piggyback off us, and we're just going to have to keep it going, and that's not really fair to our citizens here.
I, I do know before I come to the podium, you all were talking about budgets and different things. I do have a city budget. Terry brought this up. It's 1.3 million, which is basically personnel, and then my 911 budget's just a little over 600,000 for this year. So, and then also, with that being said, something that wasn't mentioned that I think needs to be mentioned, the ambulance service pays for three full-time dispatchers, and I had Maddie to look the numbers up for me today. 230,000 is what we received from the ambulance board last year. So they are paying a share of that, 1.3 million.
Beverly, I commend the mayor, the judge, yourself, the board. My question is, is everybody paying their fair share based on the runs? And I know we got Medcalf County, I know we got Barron County, and I know we got Glasgow, and I think somebody mentioned last time that, you know, maybe we're paying Glasgow and Barron Counties, and I'm fine with what we did because I felt like that's what we had to do, but to your point earlier, I think it behoves us to stay, you know, I don't want Barron to pay any more than their share, but I want them to pay their share. Medcalf same, Glasgow same. So I think we're going to need you to help us because if the amount of calls that go out in the county, I don't know how much the county pays. I know it's, if we got a million and three budget, I don't know if they pay half of it, a third.
The county does not fund it at all.
So they get all the benefit without?
Correct. They, they are the pass-through. That money that they collect on the landlines comes through the court, okay? The county does not fund the 911 at all.
Doesn't seem right.
And I know Mr. Benell asked the question because Medcalf County's totally different. They pay their employees. They, they work for a board, and the city of Edmonton and Medcalf County split that 50/50. Glasgow, Barron County has never done that, and you'll, you'll hear a lot of different disagreements on that. Yes, I, I feel like that everybody needs to be paying their share, you know, whether it be, the city of Glasgow, no doubt, is paying their share. You know, we've got Cave City, we've got Park City, and we've got the county. And yes, we dispatch every agency in this county.
Break it down again. Does Park City and Cave City pay their share?
No, they do not pay.
So we're the only one?
Correct.
We're the subsidy that keeping everybody going.
Except for the roughly 230,000 that the ambulance board.
So Pat-
And that started in 2012.
So Patrick, so hindsight's 2020, so, but I would like for her to have been able to told all of this the last time before we just said yes. So now you understand why everybody else jumped on board and said yes really, really quick.
Yeah, I get it. And, and I'm not, you know, it's daylight and dollars short talking, but we still had to get the interlocal agreement. I believe that was on my heart. But now I think we got to go back and everybody's got to pay their share.
Correct.
Or we just, I'd just shut them off. That's business, but.
Beverly, correct me if I'm wrong on this, though. If there is an operating loss within, just from the operation?
Uh huh.
Then that's where the county pays in at 81%, and Medcalf pays in at 19%? Is that?
Well, I think Glasgow will be sharing that 81% with Barron County.
I don't know the percentage of that, but that's Barron County because we are a part of Barron County.
Correct, correct.
I think what we need to continue to look at as a council is, again, the personnel costs involved because that's where the main thrust of our expenditure is, is the 1.3 million, which is personnel cost, and decide if we're happy in paying that because they are city employees. Do we want to have that control, that administration of the 911 center? If we don't, then, yeah, we talk about a more funding system that's fair for everyone, but if we say no, we'd like to control it, then we need to pay, we'll, we'll have to pay for it. But I think that working out a fair system is the right thing to do for the citizens of Glasgow, as has been mentioned tonight. The 1.3 million, and we could save probably 300 to 400,000 if we did on a fair share, in my estimate, so.
I think, I think Beverly mentioned the last meeting that this is a beginning, right? That's what you said.
It's been a slow process. It is the beginning.
So there's a long way to go, and I think we see already from the many angles that have talked tonight, yeah.
We appreciate what you do, Beverly, and your entire staff. I mean, you've done a great job, and your staff's done a great job, and every day they do, and, you know, the board that Max has sat on, the mayor, others, has moved all this forward, but we're going to have to continue to address this, and it's not going to go away, and there got to be a long-term solution to this.
I'm just going to say that, you said the right thing. We got to move forward. I don't know the history of how we got some of these formulas for funding. At the same time that this was set up, the fund, the, the taxes coming in off of, off of the wire lines, they were just, we were flush. We had so much money, nobody knew what to do with, and then all of a sudden, all that went away, and we don't have a mechanism to recover from that. So this interlocal agreement is the, the very first thing that has to happen so we can make it equitable and make it, you know, a, a profitable or at least paying its own way entity. And I appreciate Beverly's work. Beverly lives it. Max is on the board, and you've lived through this for two years, and if you are like me and the rest of them, sometimes we leave the meeting saying, what, what do we, what do we do? You know, we're trying to get it to where it's the right thing, and this is as far as I've ever seen it be, so I'm hopeful that we can take it to the next, to the next level with good people on there, you know?
Correct. I totally agree. I want to leave you with this, though. When I was here on the 28th, you, it was first responders' day, and 911 is your first responders. We're your unseen first responders. And the meeting before that, Chief Howey come before you all, asking for two more officers. Very important. So I just want to leave you with the fact that everything we do is just as, as important as the police department, the fire department, EMS. We're the start of it all. And you talked about them having that save, and it was, it was a good save. They had the house fire. And in my opinion, 911 was a small part of that save.
Yes.
Because everything that we do on our end, when we send these guys and gals out, what, how we handle the call, how we take the call, the information that we gather in a timely manner is, means so much, and we have to make sure that our 911 telecommunications has the tools that they need to accomplish that, and our tools are expensive. So I'm hoping that you all will not put this on the back burner, revisit it, and come up with a solution, okay? That's all I'm asking.
And, and while we're at it, since we talked about 911, you brought a celebrity with you tonight, Ms. April Dunbar.
Yes, Madam President.
Madam President of KENA, and she also spent, what was it, a little over two weeks in Asheville, North Carolina, dispatching, in the middle of Hurricane or Tropical Storm Helene. She went right over there, jumped in, and, and, I mean, the way she described it, the people that were there dispatching 911 in North Carolina were totally worn out and so glad to see them. So we're glad, we got to send some people over there who know what they're doing, so thank you for that, April.
Thank you, April.
Thank you all. Any more questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Beverly.
Thanks. Thank you for being here, Beverly. Good, good discussion. All right, we need to have some second readings of some ordinances right here, Rich.
Mayor, the first one is a second reading regarding a zoning change at Firethorn Street. It appearing that Zach and Jennifer Fisher and Jason and Michelle Lynch are the owners and applicants, and they have requested a zoning change for the property at 106 Firethorn Street at the end of that street and approximately 620 feet south of the Autumn Ridge Road and Firethorn Street intersection. It contains 6.99 acres, and the request is from an agricultural district to an R1 low-density residential district. A drawing of the property to be rezoned is attached as Exhibit A. A trial-type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on September 16th by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It resulted in a unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from an agricultural district to an R1 low-density residential district. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission are forwarded to the council, adopted by the council, and attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property located at 106 Firethorn Street, which contains 6.99 acres more or less, shall be changed from the agricultural district to an R1 low-density residential district. The property covered by this ordinance being described in Exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, this is the second reading of this ordinance. You have heard the reading. I'll entertain a motion that we pass it on second reading.
Motion.
From Councilman Marion, your second.
Second, Benell.
Second from Councilman Benell. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is passed on second reading, Rich.
Second reading, roll call vote.
Okay, all right, so there we go. I knew I wasn't going to do that. Clerk or temporary clerk, would you call the roll?
Lowry?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Benell?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Trigg? Gaunt?
Yes, ma'am.
Neal?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Okay, it unanimously is approved. Thank you.
Next item is a similar ordinance, second reading of a rezoning of 850 NL Rogers Wells Boulevard, containing 2.47 acres from I-1 Light Industrial to B-2 General Business District. The applicant, GBC Design Inc., for and on behalf of the owner, Splash Car Wash, has requested a zoning change for the property at 850 NL Rogers Wells Boulevard, containing 2.47 acres from I-1 Industrial, Light Industrial to B-2 General Business District. The property covered by the ordinance is attached as Exhibit A. A trial-type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on September 16th by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It resulted in a unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from I-1 Light Industrial to B-2 General Business District. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, are hereby adopted by the council, and attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property is, which contains 2.47 acres, is zoned from I-1 to a B-2 business, general business district. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. And further, all future development of this property shall comply with specific binding elements approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those binding elements are as follows. The property along and parallel to the south side of Magnolia Drive shall remain residential. Signage requirements remain either non-illuminated or on a dimmer switch after dark. Any proposed wall or parking lot lighting to be shoebox style and shine downward. And no entrance to this development is to occur onto Magnolia Drive. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Okay, this is another second reading. You have heard the reading of this particular ordinance. I'll entertain a motion that we approve it.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on this second reading.
Marion?
Yes.
Trigg? Gaunt?
Yes, ma'am.
Neal?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Benell?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much for your votes. We'll continue with our reading of ordinances for approval. This, Rich?
This is the last of the, of the set of zoning ordinances. This is a ordinance that rezones property located at the end of Oak Leaf Street. That's also in Oaks of Autumn Ridge. The property contains 3.13 acres. The request is from an agricultural district to an R1 low-density district. It appears that Zach and Jennifer Fisher are the owners and applicants of this property located at the end of Oak Leaf Street. The property contains 3.13 acres, and the request is from agricultural to an R1 low-density residential district. A drawing of the property to be rezoned is attached as Exhibit A. A trial-type due process hearing was conducted by the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 16th. There was a unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from agricultural to a low-density residential district. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, are hereby adopted by the council, and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property located for this property containing 3.13 acres shall be changed from agricultural district to an R1 low-density residential district. The property covered by this ordinance described in Exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of the property shall comply with the Development Plan Ordinance passed by the Glasgow City Council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the second reading of the ordinance. I'll entertain a motion that we approve it.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this particular ordinance? There being none, clerk, would you call the roll?
Neal?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Benell?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
Trigg? Gaunt?
Yes, ma'am.
Marion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item, mayor, is a municipal order. This order would appoint Amy Irwin to the Glasgow Municipal Airport Board to fulfill the unexpired term of Denise Dickinson with an expiration date of July 31, 2026.
All right, you have heard the particular municipal order, appointing Ms. Amy Irwin to the Glasgow Airport Board. I'll entertain a motion that we approve that.
Motion.
Benell.
Okay, and who was the?
Second.
Okay, all right, Councilman Gaunt, second on that. Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The airport board met last night. Mrs. Irwin came to the meeting as a very interested potential board member and got her first introduction to the business, and so as of tonight, she's officially on the airport board, and she is ready to go, and we're excited to have her on there.
It's a great, it's a great choice.
She's very interested, and she didn't, she couldn't vote last night, but she's, she'll be there for the next one. All right, we have some new business on the agenda tonight, Rich.
Next item is a first reading of a budget amendment ordinance. This is a budget amendment of the Glasgow annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, '25. It appropriates from the Unappropriated General Fund, $751,501 for land purchase from Farmers Rural Electric, and it authorizes the transfer from the Sanitation Landfill Fund, $7,600,000, to the Capital Projects Fund for the purchase of land, engineering services, analysis, and evaluation for the method of land acquisitions. Be it hereby ordained by the city- Be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow that the annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through fiscal year June 30, 2025 is hereby amended as follows. Section 1, there is hereby appropriated from the Unappropriated General Fund the sum of $751,501 to be transferred to the Administrative Department Land Purchase Account for the purpose of purchasing land on the outer loop. That's already been done. That's the Farmers Rural Electric property that closed on September 3rd of 2024. Section 2, there is hereby transferred $7,600,000 from the Sanitation Landfill Fund to the Capital Projects Fund, with this money being dispersed as follows. Administrative Purchase Land Account, $6,100,000. Administrative Personal and Technical Account, $800,000. Administrative Contractual Improvement Account, $700,000. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Before we talk about this, I'm going to ask City Treasurer Stephanie Garrett to make her way to the podium, because we will get this up on the floor. There may be some discussion, and she's the person that can lead that discussion. So at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to pass the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion, Benel.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so the floor is open for discussion.
Okay, I've got all this wrote down. I'm going to go ahead and say I'm going to vote no on this due to I was completely against purchasing this property, and the people I have spoke with concerning this matter are against us doing this as well. I am not an accountant or on the Finance Committee, and I don't mind being the dumbest person in the room, but I do my homework, and I have worked on this for several, several days. I have questions that you're going to answer. I love serving the citizens of Glasgow, but I, as well as them, need confidence in being able to rely on city government for transparency and truth. As of today, we are involved in... People are thinking we are involved in shady backdoor deals, and that shouldn't be happening. So the questions that I have are, what procedure did we follow to purchase this property? It's my understanding that the farmer's property is already done deal, correct? Has that been paid for?
Yes, it has. It was approved through a resolution by this council.
So the $6 million property is not a done deal. We just have a contract that hasn't been paid, correct?
We do have a contract. Due diligence has been completed, and we are in the process of going to closing. Check has not been written. It was, again, this is to put the budget... All this is for clarification of rule for the budget to be amended, to pull that out to a capital project so it can be seen better.
Okay, just from my understanding, again, what procedure did we follow to purchase this property? Was there sealed bids? I know there wasn't an auction. Did we have an appraisal?
We do. We do have an appraisal. This land was up. It was brought before this council. There was two closed sessions on this and then discussion, and this was brought back out to this council, and this council voted to purchase that.
Correct, so there is an appraisal?
Yes, there is.
And it appraised for what we purchased it for?
You would have to come by. I can't tell you the exact amount that was appraised. I just, I don't have that in my head. But if you're... We'll come by, we'll plunt it up for you.
Mayor, do you know that number?
I just know the appraisal exists. I know that it appraised for at least what we're given for it.
Okay. And there was... Well, I don't need to ask that because you just answered it. $30,000 an acre, everyone's telling me is unheard of.
Thirty acres.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars an acre. Yes. I mean, we're talking about $7 million here, and that's a lot of money. So I don't know who the players are in this, but I do know that our citizens are highly concerned and upset and wanting answers, and that's hopefully what we're doing. The administrative account that we're talking about, the $750,000 to come out of that... Okay, so my question is, and I have it right here, and I could be looking at it wrong, the estimated balance of that's $14,009,000, correct?
I don't understand what you're asking, $14,094,000...
Okay. The whole administrative account? Maybe it's best if I ask my question first and then you explain it.
Okay.
What I'm wanting to know, and people on the Finance Committee can answer this as well, why would we move $750,000 out of the general fund to put it in there if the money's already in the account? Is it just a line item for auditing purposes?
It is.
Okay, that's what I thought. Second question. How much money are we required to have in the landfill fund? Because I know as of right now, there's 8.8 million, correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, so what is it right now?
If you come to the office, I can look that up for you, but I can tell you it's not eight.
I have the... I can't read the budget. I'm not an accountant. I mean, I can hand... Do you know, Terry?
What you have before you is the budget. You don't have the fund balances, and that's what Stephanie's alluding to, is you need to get with her to get the fund balances. All you have...
Is the estimated 24, 25...
Budget.
Budget.
That has no balances, that has no bank balances, nothing like that.
Well, I feel like we should know that before we...
You can come by to my office and look at that.
Honey, what I'm saying is if we're voting on moving funds tonight, I feel like we should know what that balance is, because there has to be money left in the landfill. There has to be.
Yes, and there is money left in the landfill, but what that's doing for the purchase that was voted upon to do, that's moving that money to set it aside as a project of its own, so you can see that money sitting there of that only project.
Will this money go back into the landfill, like whenever we sell the land, or if we do that land in the future, we'll put it back into that?
We will.
I don't know how in the world we as a body could vote on something when we don't have the figures in front of us.
I think Councilman Kirkpatrick, that's the whole purpose of us getting the agenda on Thursday, that we could ask on Friday or prior to today. I mean, Stephanie is always completely open when we come in and ask those questions, and I think you maybe are mixing up the landfill fund with the closure, post-closure.
Nope.
We are only required to maintain a balance.
That's not true. That's not true at all. You have to... There has to be money in the landfill fund to cover equipment, et cetera. Am I right?
There has to be funds, but it's not a set dollar amount. No, it's not. But we look at that as to be a set dollar amount to keep our operations going.
Absolutely.
We've already approved and bought, purchased all of our equipment for this year. We made sure everything was purchased before we've done any of this. We are also setting, and Nick can help me here, we've just purchased new compactors, new dozers, new... We've got new dump trucks. All of our equipment is up for four or five years now.
And Marnie, without any...
No disrespect, but I can go buy a brand-new Forerunner and drive it off the lot, and the engine go out.
That's true, and we have money to fix repairs.
And that's all I'm asking. I'm not trying to throw a wrench in your business. All I'm asking is a balance and how much we have to... We should have in the landfill account. That's all I'm asking.
Marnie, if it's any consolation, I've fought her as hard as anybody over the landfill, and I promise you, she will not let the levels go below anything. She's got enough money in the post-closure. She's got plenty of money in the landfill, I promise you. And I've... We've had that discussion, and, I mean, everybody had the opportunity. I would say to the people that say there's no way $38,000 an acre, they probably have not bought any land in the last 10 or 15 years.
And that could be a possibility, but that doesn't answer the questions that I'm asking. And, you know, like I said, I'm not an accountant, and I may be the dumbest person in the room, and I'm okay with that, but if I have a question, somebody smarter than me answer it. That's all I'm asking. And if this is all I have, is this...
Well, that's a budget.
Which I can't even read it anyway, and maybe that's my stupidity, but...
What I would have probably done is Thursday, when you got to Jen or Friday, just, I mean, as much as she and I fought, she's always been there to answer any question that I've ever had.
And please don't think that I'm trying to put you on the spot or fight with you, because I'm not. I just want the questions answered.
Just come by, and I'll show you.
Well, and here's the thing, we've already voted to buy the land.
We can back out.
We're voting to... No, contractually, we can't back out. We're just putting the money in the right place to finish the transaction. That's what this is about, is moving... Am I saying that right, Stephanie?
That's correct. That's very correct. I mean, we could have left this... I can leave this in the landfills fund, just to be honest with you, write a check out and put it to a purchase of the landfill, and mark it as an asset to the landfill, and we can carry on. But by doing this, it allows it as an audit to be seen better, it allows it as anybody to be seen better, and it better keeps up with your funds.
I figured that, I really did, but I just wanted a number. That's all I wanted.
Councilperson Kirkpatrick, the approximate balance that we figured here in the landfill is about $12 million. Am I close on that?
You're close.
Okay. We got $12 million in the landfill fund right now, and we're moving money out of that, and that's going to leave us with several million dollars remaining in the landfill fund. So the money's there. All we're doing is transferring a cash asset to a land asset. You're just moving items around on your balance sheet. Okay, so what we're doing is we're making an investment in ourselves when we agreed to purchase this property.
Don't say "we." I wasn't in that "we."
The council approved that, so that's the "we" in that. So we approved that as a council. So we've made an investment, we've got to make it in ourselves for a long-term solution, and this is... Tonight, all we're doing is moving the money.
Okay, so carrying on with the discussion, mayor, could you clarify to the citizens what exactly we're doing with this property?
On December 3rd, from 6:00 until 8:00 p.m. in this very chambers, the public is going to be invited to an open meeting so that the public can all come and see the drawings that have been prepared by the engineers that we use. And actually, we have like three different options on the... That the committee is reviewing, but the entire community will be invited to come by here and see exactly what the plans are for this land. And there will be a way where they can write down questions that they might have or something, but... And we'll all be in... The committee will be in the room to answer questions. You know, we'll say, okay, this is what this is about, this is what that is about. But we have not been able to say a word because we've been doing due diligence. We can't talk about this until we go through the process of due diligence, which just got completed.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
And one other point, I want to piggyback on Councilman Gauntz's comment about the purchase price per acre of these properties. There are two properties in Glasgow that are for sale now that are close to this. I mean, they're not right on the doorstep. The property at the corner of Reynolds Road and West Main Street, that's .66 acres, has an asking price of $575,000. Now, there's structures on that, okay? Grant that, okay? If you go up the road a little bit to American Avenue and West Main Street, fairly on the market, just recently on the market, 8.27 acres, we've got $1,640,000. That's $198,000 an acre. If we look at some property that's also listed in our community that's over-owned, that's not too far from this property that we're talking about, on Grandview Avenue, we've got 6.93 acres and are asking $489,000 for it. That's $70,000.
$38,000 is cheap.
Yeah, $38,000. I talked to someone today in an adjoining city, and we were having a discussion about city opportunities and growth and investment in cities, and when I... We just came up, and I told them what our price per acre was, they said, can't believe it's that inexpensive. And then they gave me some other conversation about things that they had invested in in their community and thinking where they would be today if they had not made investments for the future. So I think this is a good investment for us. It's a good long-term planning tool. It's a catalyst. We got to think about it as a catalyst, and council members, please think about this as an investment. You're investing in the future of Glasgow, and all we're doing tonight is moving one on our balance sheet, moving cash and making it available to purchase one property. We've already purchased the one property, so this is the second property that we're purchasing. So I would hope that we can get a good vote on this and move forward.
Those properties you were listing, those were... They're still up for sale, right?
Still up for sale.
So they've not sold those properties?
Let me tell you one property that I can tell you about very well. So the organization that I'm a part of paid $100,000 an acre for property on West Main Street, and we bought four acres. It's public record, sold a number of years ago. So I'm saying the property, the price we paid per acre for the properties that we have purchased, in the process of purchasing, they're good values.
Well, I was against purchasing this to start with, but I think that we should have, you know, bargained a little bit more. I mean, a lot of the citizens are, you know, concerned because it went from one party to another party that didn't own it very long, and then they sold it to us, and we just, you know, took it real quick. So I'm going to vote no, too.
One more thing that I will say, just because there's no other place to say it. Terry hits the nail on the head, we're investing in the future, because this land out there is very valuable, $6 million plus. Glasgow is not growing. We have more complaints about the fact that we don't have any... I had developers saying things to me about, we don't have anything left. The City of Glasgow is in the best position to start this going. Any developers are going to have to go out and tie up their cash and pay interest on their cash to buy this. The City of Glasgow is going to do exactly what Bowling Green did when they bought what today is Lover's Lane. You have to sit there and say, okay, developers, we are going to have this land. We're in the best position. We're not using tax payments to pay for this land. This is money we've generated from the landfill. There's no taxpayer money going into it. We're not going to be paying interest on that money. It's just a way to get some developers to say, y'all are serious about this. This is the best piece of property in the middle of town that we could ever find.
Terry, go on, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all I'm saying, is that we're investing, and what a better way to invest it. We have the money in the bank, we're not paying any interest on it, and we're not slowing anybody down as far as developers having to tie up their capital in, you know, in other words, in spending time developing the land.
Reynolds Road and Main Street closes Friday. I don't know if you knew that or not, so just FYI for everybody.
And just to clarify, Stephanie, this ordinance that we're about to pass has nothing to do with the purchase of either piece of property. This is to provide transparency in our financial documentation for how this is going to be laid out, so that when auditors who come in here every year, they go through our books, when people do records requests for our financial documentations. This is about transparency of funds, not buying property.
Yes, ma'am, you're exactly right. Thank you, Patrick Gauntz. Thank you.
Listen, I can be a hard out, but I give you credit where credit's due.
So we have had a motion, and we have had a second, and we have had the floor open for discussion. I'm going to, at this point in time, call the vote. All in favor of moving forward with this budget amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so I can... Believe I can tell we have two no's and the rest are yeses, okay? So the motion carries. And again, write that down, December 3rd, 6:00 till 8:00 p.m. right here.
Next item, mayor, is an ordinance prepared by our Bond Council, Christian Juckett. I'll read a summary of that ordinance. This ordinance authorizes the issuance and sale in one or more series of the city's general obligation bonds in the maximum authorized principal amount of $5.4 million, subject subject to adjustment upward by an amount not to exceed 10% or downward by any amount. The exact amount of each series to be determined by the mayor to finance the cost to renovate, improve and equip park facilities to be owned and operated by the city for the benefit of its citizens. This ordinance also authorizes the bonds to be sold by advertised competitive bid and sets the terms and conditions for the sale of the bonds. The ordinance authorizes the mayor to review the bids and accept the successful bid on behalf of the city and authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to execute all necessary documents, instruments and obligations of the city in order to issue each series of bonds. To the extent budgeted funds are not available for said purpose, orders and provides for the levy of an annual tax in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds. A copy of the full text of the ordinance is available for public inspection during regular office hours, 9:00 to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, at the city clerk's office.
All right, so, we have representatives here from our bond company, that's a lawyer right there, Mr. Christian Juckett, who is up here, but before we get into the discussion to do this properly, I want to entertain a motion that we approve first reading of this ordinance.
Motion, Lowery.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Neal, so we have a motion and we have a second and now we can go into the period of discussion. Christian, do you want to say anything or you want somebody to ask you a question or how do you want to do this?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm Christian Juckett, I'm a lawyer in Louisville, we are, I'm with Rubin and Hayes, we're bond counsel, our, our obligation is to the city, so we're, like Mr. Alexander said, we're counsel of the city, our ethical obligation to the city. So, we draft this ordinance, the idea in this bond, in, in the bond market, when you go to the, to the bank, they give you, they give you the terms of your loan, they give you a loan agreement and in the bond market, the, the loan agreement is essentially this ordinance. So, the city's terms, we work with Baird, obviously, to help prepare the terms for the city's loan and then it's presented to bidders, is, is the purpose for this resolution. The security, like Mr. Alexander said, is a general obligation pledge. Just to clarify, in case anybody asks questions, the state law requires, let's include Languig saying that the city will, to the extent not, budgeted amounts aren't available, the city will adopt it, adopt a tax, that's, we put that in there because state law requires it, but otherwise, the money is budgeted, it's, you don't have to adopt a tax unless, God forbid, the budget comes in under what it's obligated to be. Any questions?
Questions for Christian? And of course, we have Chip Sutherland, who is also with Baird and we're all familiar with him too, he does a lot of bond work for a lot of entities around here. Is any other questions that anybody would have in understanding this particular ordinance?
Ask you gentlemen, what do we, would expect a rate on this, do you have any indication where rates would be?
Yes, sir, based on all the information that we've put together, we, we're forecasting a rate probably around four to four and a quarter, might be on the upper end of that just because interest rates have moved up since the, since the election. To answer you directly, we're, we're targeting around four, four to four and a quarter. And that's, that's fixed rate and the ordinance that Christian drafted specified a 20-year term, so that's a 20-year borrowing rate.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I will call the question, all in favor of approving first reading of this ordinance, bond ordinance, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right, then the ordinance passes.
I just have to say, we missed out on a fantastic opportunity for these gentlemen to go through all these different pages. I got to sit through that at the electric plant board and they do a fantastic job with the process and explaining that, if, if anybody has questions about what they read, I appreciate what you all do.
Thank you, and we really appreciate you all being here to answer any questions that might come up because, you know, we don't live in this world every day like you guys do, so, we appreciate you being here.
I'm going to say one thing, happy to just expound on that just a bit, one thing I think as a council, you need to know that there's two readings to the ordinance and the next reading is scheduled for the, we have the, that's 12th to 25th, it'd be the next regular meetings, it'd be the second reading. And we're scheduled to sell bonds on November the 26th, that's a competitive bond sale as Mr. Alexander referenced, and that's when we'll lock in the rate. So, keen on that and the reason why I bring it up is because part of our duty, our Baird's is a, you're, we have a fiduciary to the city council and so we prepare all the legal doc, all the, I'm sorry, all the security documents in conjunction with Christian as your bond attorney and we're going to post a preliminary official statement that's available for investors and go through all the machinations that we go through to make the bond sale happen on the 26th, so, there will be notifications, there will be publications that you'll see that, that move this forward based on tonight's sort of unanimous decision. So, I just wanted you all to know that as a council, that we're doing things now based on tonight that will occur before the second reading. That and I think, I also wanted to point out that the administration and staff and we participated in a rating call with Moody's Investor Service today, it's handled very well. Our, our opinion is that the city should get an investment, well, will get an investment grade rating solidly in the A category, be, would be my personal guess, I mean, if it's higher, it's great, but we just need investment grade, that's something that you all need to know and appreciate as well that's happening and there will be a, just like with the electric plant board or the water company, there, we're now, will be a third-party opinion from Moody's Investor Service on the, on the credit worthiness and the, the sound worthiness of the city of Glasgow is, is a credit risk. So, those were a couple unsolicited things I wanted to share with the council. Thanks.
Thank you all very much. We're going to skip down here because the, we have two municipal orders that actually pertain to the same thing that we're talking about. Rich, you want to go over these municipal orders at the bottom of the agenda?
Yes, sir. The first one is an order of the city council adopting certain guidelines and procedures to comply with Rule 15C 2-12 of the Security and Exchange Commission. This municipal order in summary is as follows. The Security and Exchange Commission rules require the city to disclose certain financial information on an annual basis in connection with marketing the city's bonds. To ensure compliance with the SEC rules and the disclosure certificates related to the sale or underwriting of the bonds, this municipal order adopts certain disclosure guidelines and procedures.
All right, you've heard the municipal order, I would indicate, or accept a motion that we approve this order.
Motion, Lowery.
Second, Benio.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about this particular ordinance pertaining to the Securities and Exchange Commission guidelines? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And one more municipal order?
Yes, sir. Municipal order adopting certain procedures in connection with the issuance of tax-exempt obligations and other matters relating thereto. This municipal order relates to the tax-exempt status of interest on general obligation bonds. The interest on the city's general obligation bonds is excluded from gross income of the bondholders for federal income tax purposes. The federal tax law requires the city, as the issuer of the bonds, to comply with post-issuance requirements outlined in the federal tax code. To make sure that the federal requirements are met and to preserve the tax-exempt status, the municipal order that we're, we're seeking adoption on, adopts the procedures to assure compliance with that.
All right, you've heard the reading of this municipal order, I will entertain a motion that we approve it.
Motion, Norris.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, from Councilman Neal, and we have now upon the floor the opportunity for any discussion. Discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this particular order is approved. Now, we can jump back up here to this first reading of this ordinance. Oh, y'all, now, do you want me to, these guys are like, y'all are like standing there ready to go. Do you want to talk about some industrial property on Lewis Street?
I said hello, Todd Ekin.
I can tell you, these two shorter resolutions, they're pretty esoteric, it's our job as your finance team, Chip and me, to help the city, help Stephanie comply with IRS regulations and SEC rules and even though we impose that burden on Stephanie, really will, we'll work closely with her to make sure all those rules are followed, that's our job.
Very good, y'all are good at it, appreciate it very much, thank you. All right, we got some rezoning to deal with on first reading, Rich?
Yes, sir, this is an ordinance rezoning property located at 808 South Lewis Street. The property contains .24 acres, the request is from an I-1 light industrial district to R-1 low-density residential district. Owner and applicant Stephen Hernandez has requested this, requested this zoning change for the property at 808 South Lewis Street, it contains .24 acres, the request is from an I-1 light industrial district to an R-1 low-density residential district. A drawing of the property subject to rezoning is attached as Exhibit A. A trial-type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on October 21 by the Planning and Zoning Commission, it resulted in the unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from I-1 light industrial to R-1 low-density residential district. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission are forwarded to the council, are hereby adopted by the council and attached as Exhibit B. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property located at 808 South Lewis, containing .24 acres, is changed from I-1 light industrial to an R-1 low-density residential district, the property covered by the ordinance described in Exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the reading of, the first reading of this ordinance rezoning the property to 808 South Lewis Street, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion, Benio.
Second.
Second, for Max, okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion about this particular piece of property or this particular ordinance? There being none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and this ordinance is passed on first reading.
Next two resolutions deal with surplus property, the first one is a resolution dealing, declaring certain parks and recreation property as surplus and authorizing its disposition. That whereas the Glasgow Parks and Recreation Department possessed certain personal property described in Exhibit A, whereas the personal property is no longer needed by the department and whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interest for the personal property to be declared surplus and its disposition authorized according to law. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, be it hereby resolved by the city as follows. Pursuant to KRS 82.083 Sub 3, the following written determinations are made. A, the property to be surplus is the personal property more particularly described in Exhibit A. B, the intended use of this property at the time of its acquisition was for the use and benefit of the Glasgow Parks and Recreation Department and its operations. C, the reason why it is in the public interest to dispose of the personal property is due to its age and continuing to maintain and keep personal property described would be redundant. D, the method of disposition to be used shall be electronic auction as permitted by law. Section 2, the property described on Exhibit A is hereby declared surplus. Section 3, Mayor Royce shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary to carry out the actions contemplated herein.
All right, you have heard the reading of the surplus property resolution for the Parks and Recreation Department, I entertain a motion that we approve this particular resolution.
Motion.
From Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, Benio.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of passing the resolution for the surplus property indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The resolution is passed and we have one more.
Yes, sir. This is a resolution that declares certain Glasgow Police Department property surplus pursuant to KRS 82083 and KRS 65.041 and authorizing its disposition. That whereas the Glasgow Police Department possesses certain personal property which is more particularly described on Exhibit A, attached here too, specifically 13 Wyndham weaponry rifles, whereas the rifles are of sufficient age that the department desires to trade the rifles for newer models which would better meet the needs of the department, whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interest for the rifles to be declared surplus and their disposition authorized according to law. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, be it hereby resolved by the city as follows. Pursuant to KRS 82.083 Sub 3, the following written determinations are made. A, the property to be surplus are rifles more particularly described on Exhibit A. Subparagraph B, the intended use of this property at the time of their acquisition was for the use and benefit of the Glasgow Police Department and its operations. Subparagraph C, the reason why it is in the public interest to dispose of the rifles is due to their age and length of service and it would be better suited to trade those rifles for newer models which would be better suited for the department. Subparagraph D, the method of disposition to be used shall be to trade the rifles to a federally licensed firearms dealer so that new rifles or other firearms may be provided to the Glasgow Police Department and this method is specifically sanctioned by KRS 65.041 Subparagraph 1B. Section 2, the rifles described in Exhibit A are hereby declared as surplus. Section 3, the rifles shall be disposed of by transferring same to Kessler's Police Supply, which is a federally licensed federal firearms dealer, so that the firearms dealer may provide the Glasgow Police Department with new rifles or other firearms. Section 4, Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary to carry out the actions contemplated herein.
You've heard the specifics of this particular resolution declaring police department property as surplus, I will entertain a motion that we approve this.
Motion.
From Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, anybody would like to discuss this resolution before we vote? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and the resolution does carry. Thank you, Rich, there's two things in your packet that I want to be sure you all know to read, there's been two executive orders signed, just read over those, see if you have any questions, they're pretty straightforward, a new standard operating procedure for the police department, an executive order about the guidelines for the safe haven baby box down at the fire department, which we cut the ribbon on a couple of weeks back, so make sure that you understand those things, but they are presented for you to, to go through. If you've, I really want to talk about the leaf collection, it's really, the schedule is working out really well, it's all over the website, Jim McGowan is back there with the Department of Public Works, can you weigh in on how leaf collection is going?
I just want to let everybody know, leaf, leaf season started back last week on November 1st, I believe it was, we went through, I believe it was zone three to start with and we'll be, everything's, everything's working out pretty good right now. We actually had, we, we started a couple of days early just to get some of the equipment going and make, make sure everything is running. Of course, as usual, we, we always find something that's, that's tore up and we, we've got everything running now, so.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good, it's a good schedule and I'm glad that everybody is, the citizens are jumping in there as well. Thank you, Jim, I appreciate that. Also, just, there's, on your calendar, you should really put a big asterisk on November the 23rd, because on the 23rd is the 46th Annual Turkey Trot on the downtown Glasgow Square, it's, it's a big deal, 46 years that we've been having the turkey trot and we always have a whole lot of participation. At the same time on the 23rd, not at the same time, but a little bit later in the day, from 1:00 until 7:00, we're going to have the fabulous Sip Shop and Ho 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 Christmas Market on the north and east sides of the public square, the local crafts and artist booths will be set up, they do a tremendous job, the planning is, it's very exciting, I just want to come down here and be a part of this Sip Shop and Ho 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 on the 23rd. Then at 5:00 PM that night, we have the lighting up of Glasgow, beginning at 5:00 PM, right here on the Glasgow Square, bring your camera, get a picture with Santa, enjoy all the festivities planned. Kevin Amiet is with us here, Kevin is on Renaissance, which kind of leads that, any heads up you want to give anybody, Kevin?
What I had for the light-up event is both choruses from Barron County High School, Glasgow Middle School, we coming to sing, they'll have a few songs there and then also there'll be a movie projected onto City Hall, a Christmas movie, 30-minute movie, right after the, the light-up event for those that want to stick around, so, pretty good time.
If you've never been, it truly, it'll, I don't care how humbug you are, it'll shift you into the holiday spirit if you come to light up Glasgow and again, put that on the 23rd. Other than that, our next meeting's on the 25th, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Chastity's got more.
Just a couple of things this week down at the Plaza Theater, Thursday- This week down at the Plaza Theater, Thursday evening is the Children's Day celebration at six P.M., and then Helping the Hard Working, there's some tickets left still to support that organization with Nico Moon on Saturday evening at eight.
Okay, thank you for, uh, bringing those up today, because those are both very, very important, and we need to try to get to all of those and support our organizations. Now, is there a motion that we adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, no discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much for being here.
Terry, just to be clear, that property's under contract, I think.